... roll call, please. Kathy Steer.
Roger Sprague.
Absent.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Eggleton.
Here.
Gary Ellingson.
Here.
Chester Norikus.
Here.
Wes Ryan.
Here.
And Henry Quomp.
Here.
First order of business, comments from citizens present. Do we have any citizens present that would like to comment about their...? Nothing. Okay. Next, I have minutes of the meeting for September 23rd, 2013 for review. Does anybody have any corrections or...? Not except the motion to pass the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, minutes are passed. Special order of business presentation, D Lake undergrounding plan review, and I think Kurt's up first. Thank you, Kurt.
Good evening. As you all know, we're in the process of designing the undergrounding for the overhead utilities in the D River area, near the wayside, on the west side of Highway 101. The original scope of the project was proposed to underground from northwest Second Street, which is the street where if you wanted to get to Kylo's, that street, down to southwest Ebb is where the coffee shop is. In May, the agency awarded the contract for the design with Ace Consulting, and they've been working on it quite a bit. There's been a number of meetings with the different utilities, and the emails have been flying back and forth as this thing has been taking shape. The major considerations to this point have been the extent of the bore under the D River, so we know now where that would have to go. It has to be 17 feet below the actual riverbed of the D River. It has to get underneath that sheet piling wall that's there as well, but we'll be well under that because of the state requirement of being that deep under the river, and then it'll pop out in the state park. At least, that's the proposal. We have, now that we've got that proposal, we have a few questions to answer here tonight, and then we'll be able to take that to the property owners, which are Kylo's and the state park, for to make sure that they can buy into the plan. The other major considerations-
That the wayside, Kurt?
Yeah, at the wayside, state park wayside. The other considerations were the number of conduits that were going to be necessary. It looks like the bore, they're going to bore a pipe under the river that'll be 28 inches, I believe. 28 inches, and in that will be 12, 13 different conduits. And then when it comes out of the bore, and then they can go to a trench, then those will be laid out in a trench in a different fashion, but to get underneath, there'll be a bore like that. So that's what they've really been working on, is which utilities needed, how many, and what size conduits, and then how big of a pipe that was going to take in order to make this happen. And then the other issues that they've been working on are the, where this thing starts and ends. Like I said, we had given a preliminary proposal of this is where we were talking about, and then, but now what does it really look like? So at the last meeting that we had with the group, the Ace was proposing, put together a preliminary plan for everybody to review, and after that, we're at that meeting, then Pacific Power, they had had access to the plans before the meeting, so they didn't come in cold, so they could discuss it. They strongly recommended that we consider shortening up that length, and there were some reasons. And first of all, if we would talk about the south terminus, so the one place on there you can see is the Pirate Coffee Company, so it gives you an idea of where we're talking about. North is to the left of this map. So originally, we, then, okay, so this is what it looks like, obviously, everybody knows that. So we were really, we were looking at eliminating stopping the undergrounding at that pole on that corner. It seemed like it made sense. Well, it made sense to us, but it didn't make sense to Pacific Power quite as much, because when you, wherever you end this thing, you know, right now, the poles are all in line, and they hold each other up. There are any guy wires to keep them up. So if you want to stop that, you're going to have to put some guy wires in there. So if, by putting, if we leave that there, then we've got to put another pole over here in order to guy wire on the other side of the street, and put guy wires there. So that's the first issue. The second issue is, this pole right here is a significant pole to the motel. I think I have a picture of it, yeah. So you see it has three transformers on it, underground power to the motel. If we eliminate that pole, there's going to be all the work associated with getting power back to the motel that has absolutely nothing to do with undergrounding in the area where we want underground. So if we already have to put a pole 50 feet up the road, then maybe just terminating at this pole makes more sense. And as you can see by that black car, there's a little planter area, and they can guy wire, guy that pole fairly easily. So there was discussion about, you know, if we can stop at that pole rather than across the street, there's a significant amount of work and savings and costs and stuff that, again, isn't really associated with the project.
So use this pole as the anchor?
So, yeah. So this pole would be the last pole, and we would guide this pole. And then, as you can see, it doesn't, it isn't in really the view shed. It isn't, you know, it's not blocking the view of the ocean, only that part of the hotel. So that one seemed fairly straightforward, that certainly opens to your discussion, any thoughts that you might have.
Kurt, I guess the visualization, then, with the pole would be there, but the wires from the right-hand side of that pole would not be there?
That's correct.
So they'd be underground, and miraculously come up the pole, and then they will be on the left-hand side of the pole?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, next to that pole, next to that fence, there would be one of those green boxes that stick up about three or four feet, it's about 10 foot square, where all the wires would come from that pole down into that box, and that's where all the connections would be made. Okay?
Would it really be 10 feet, 10 feet square?
Yeah, they're about, they're about that big. If you go by, next time you go by the putt and bat, that's what it would look like, the one that's out in front of that.
Okay.
So that's the south end. The north end's a little more complicated, it'd take a little more thought. So here again is a drawing of that area, and I think you can orient yourself to northwest Second Drive there. This is what it looks like as the picture. And as you can see, there are some conduit that come down that pole now, and those conduit go over to the hotels that are on the ocean, on the oceanfront. And we'll, and I want to show you that because we're going to come back to that. And the other thing I wanted to make sure you can see, you see how, where that retaining wall is there? And if you're familiar with it, that's a fairly narrow sidewalk, and just up the road, we've got a, well, not we, but well, the city, there's a pole in the middle of that sidewalk, and it's one of those poles that has caused a lot of consternation, because it's, you've got about a foot and a half on each side of the pole, and it's right in the middle of the sidewalk, and there's really no place to put it, but they're looking at what they can do. So putting another, so terminating this thing further north becomes a problem for those same reasons. In other words, if we terminate this here, again, the same thing, is if we terminated this pole, then we got another, have to put another pole on the other side of the street where that stop sign is, in order to guy wire, because you can't guy from this pole down, because there's a street there. So again, if we eliminate this pole, we've got to put another pole there and guy, and that can be done. That's not a problem. Again, Pacific Power then said, but you should know that, well, okay, and then so then we've got this retaining wall that I was going to point out. You should know that this is a very, very significant pole, and again, there would be significant costs associated with eliminating that pole. So if there, so it's up to us, but if we want it, if we want to terminate at this pole, that it makes it a big difference. And I think I have a picture here. You can see that square there, that's where the bore would come out of the ground at that point, within that square. And then you can kind of see, as it goes out towards the street, there's just kind of that shaded area. It's- it would be trenched, but that's what that is indicating. So I think at this point, that's that pole. And again, the conduit that comes down that pole runs in behind this building over towards Kylo's, and there's a big transformer box sitting, another one of those green boxes, it's not quite as big, but it services Kylo's and the shore water, and provides the power for those two. So again, if we eliminate that, if we, if we put a pole back further, then we've got to run power back to pick up that transformer. So this one's a little bit more in the view shed, so that's what we wanted to bring it to you, so that you know what we're, what we're talking about here. So those are the, those were the thoughts that came out of that last meeting, and just leave it at that. That pole, actually, here, the one on the right-hand side, is that same pole that you saw in the last picture. So this is the area that we're trying to underground, and I wanted to make sure that you understood fully what this was about. So the, there, so this north terminus, we've got that, the pole has those condu, the pole that we were originally going to do has those conduit on it, apparently, those, there's too much on that pole already for them to put all of the, all the conduits have to come off of it for all the different utilities in order to start at that pole. So there was the thought of, well, can we, can we start it a little bit further north? And that was then the problem of, well, now we're going to be sticking another pole in the middle of the sidewalk, because we've only got a little ways before that retaining wall starts. And even with the retaining wall, we'd still have to make the sidewalk wider, but at least we could do it there at the sidewalk. So there's a, there's a, Pacific Power, we didn't tell, we didn't say that this was going to be a slam dunk, this one here. So we said, you might want to continue to look at some other ideas. So they have, and some of those other ideas are to go further north and maybe figure out a way to just go, just a little bit further north before we get to that retaining wall. There's a possibility of putting other poles out there in front of the shore water between this pole and that intersection of doing it in there. Again, we've got to find a place for that big vault to go. Yeah, and then the cost of, the related cost of just hooking back up what's already there that has nothing to do with the undergrounding itself. So those are the things that we wanted to bring to you, see what your thoughts were, and how we might want to address those with the consultant.
Mr. Chairman, just so I have it clear in my head, you, they want to start the, or end, begin, or coming from the north, begin the undergrounding at that pole in front of shore water?
Yes.
Then do the undergrounding up to that pole with all the bingies on it in front of?
D sands.
D sands. So it actually shortens it, like, what, two blocks?
Yeah.
Roughly?
Probably less than that, but it's, yeah, it shortens it up some.
Is there an associated lessening of cost, then, if we're going to be doing that?
Well, certainly, there'll be less cost. It, I suspect that the project's still going to come in at, what, about the budget, what we had budgeted for it. If we, if we have to do this additional work, I suspect it's going to be more than that.
I, from my standpoint, I mean, trying to re-hook all those motels and things with, would be a disastrous event for them, as well as, I think it would be highly disruptive for, for everybody, you know, and I don't think that, from my standpoint, I mean, if we can't underground the whole town, then from those two poles, I think that would be a good choice. That's my opinion.
Mr. Chair?
Gary.
I was just wondering if I could ask Kurt, out of curiosity, the 28-inch conduit has to go 17 feet below the river. So, I mean, I saw the water pipe go under the creek up by, or up at Rose End, off of Salacy, you know, so they were at the surface, and then it, you know, went down, it kept going down, and then across, so I get that part of it, but that, would it be that kind of machine, or would they have to dig way, way down and go down there? I'm just, I'm having a hard time understanding.
It's a, there's a couple different ways of doing, the last one that we did with the keel, they basically pushed a large pipe forward, dug out inside the pipe, got the sand out, and pushed it a little forward, and kept doing that. But that, they were going in a straight line. This one needs to be the type of bore that has a head on it that's, that can be moved, so that they can, they can run down and then come back up. And then they pull back the pipe. And in the process, they're putting bentonite in there, and there's a slurry that's going in there, so that they can get this bigger pipe back. I'm having a hard time actually visualizing how you-
I am, I am too.
-pull a 30-inch pipe back through it.
Hence, my question is, so do we know how, well, you've probably stated it, but how much that part of it costs?
We do have a cost estimate broken down. I don't have it with me, but we do have an estimated cost breakdown for this, yes.
I mean, for me, I think what part of this leads up to, and I get the pole, you know, the poles that probably make sense not to deal with even more than what is being discussed, but is it worth, because of that, doing the rest of it? I'd like to ask that to the, to the agency.
Well, if we proceed with the project, I certainly wouldn't object to Pacific Power's recommendations, and nor do I want to have an additional cost added to the project.
I guess, you know, for me, the project gained approval, really because of, I think, this shot right here, which, as I remember the discussion, the first place, the consumer traveling south sees the ocean. So, and the economic development value is to improve the view shed. I'm having trouble visualizing that improving much with that telephone pole sitting there.
Power pole.
Power pole. So, now, I'm easier on the other end, because I, coming down the hill, I think the pole kind of blends into the D sands, but this one sticks, sticks out. So Gary, I agree with you. I think the key is, you know, what's it cost? But I think, Kurt, you mentioned one of the plans might be to head it north, back it up a block or something, and just bring it underground another block, but starting further north. What we don't know is what the overall cost is of dealing with this pole. Now, I've got to believe it can be, it's just the cost item. So for me, it's the cost and the view are the two items that are important. So I would need to know how much more. We know it's going to be cut more, but again, a combination of shortening on one end, and, you know, what's the net increase? Because I think that'll still be with lines across the road and everything else, it's still an ugly entrance, that we were trying to take care of.
Anything?
I'm just kind of like, I guess that word, like, cost is farther north.
We can get that for you.
Henry?
Gary. The only reason I'm mentioning this is because I was up there for more than a little bit when that line went in under, up by Salacy, and I was talking to the company doing the work, and it's been long enough now that I don't suppose they would mind me saying this, but essentially, the trajectory that they thought they could bore the line into was not possible. They hit a bunch of rock, and the guy was really hating it, because he was locked into the price he had quoted, and by that time, you know, the, his budget was out the window. And, but to his credit, or to that company's credit, they saw it through. So if this was me going 17 feet under the D River, I'd be doing a lot of drilling first to make sure of what's down there, you know, to know exactly what you're getting into, because we might not be so lucky with another situation if somebody starts drilling, and it's something that is different from what they thought it is, or from what they think it is.
And they have, they've done a series of test holes throughout the project just for that very reason, so you're exactly right.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, Kurt, I guess we're going to have to come back with this one.
Okay.
A little bit more information?
The sense, though, is all right on the south end.
Yeah.
And that's not-
My biggest concern is actually, is, yeah, I would like to see it further north too, but I'm also cognizant of what the disruption would be, or concerned about the disruption to the establishments there while they completely rewire that puppy, that it could be significant. That we certainly don't want to be hurting people's business with any more than we have to, you know, that was, that's a concern to me.
I don't think on our previous undergrounding projects, and we've had two fairly significant ones, we had any real lengthy outages. Did we, Kurt? You weren't here for one of them, but-
Yeah, Wes may have some inside knowledge on this, because that was exactly what Josh was saying, too, is that it's one thing that, you know, if we do this project, and we just disconnect and they make some other connections, but to re-run that wire, then it's, they will be out for a significant period of time for a hotel, for another business that may not be as significant, because they're not 24-hour businesses. But that was one of their considerations. So that's a question that I should get asked to about the outage.
Yeah, because that would be important to me, because that would, that would, may or may not change my opinion.
The other thing it looks like from me, and I don't have the rest of the drawings here, but if you can imagine the box that you saw there in the middle of Kylo's parking lot, and however long you thought, they were there at Salacy, I suspect they're going to, it's going to take some time. I mean, it took them a week to bore under the highway at ProBuild, that the, Craig Kylo has been very receptive to this project, and, you know, whatever we need, he was, he said would be okay. I'm sure he, at this point, I didn't think that we were going to be coming out there in this parking lot. I thought we'd be coming out at Second Street. So that work may end up having to be done in a period of time when they're shut down, and I think they shut down every year in January or February or something for months. So, and then that'd be a great time to do the work in the middle of the state park, too, because the hole in the state park is three times the size of the one you saw on that page, because they're actually, the boring machine will be in the state park boring towards Kylo's. So it may be that the project ends up getting broken into really two types of, two projects, you know. One, we do the bore during the time when it works out best, and then let it lay through the spring, and then come back and finish the project. So just throw that out. Is that what we're, that was what we're seeing from the plans?
And that'd be interesting timeline to see if they could do that, and, you know, again, if there is disruption, you know, could it be scheduled for the lowest occupancy time for a hotel?
Okay, well, we will do that. We'll get back to you with the answers to these questions, and go from there. Thank you.
And speaking of disruptions, we've run out of time again, so I guess-
Can we finish the sign? It's not going to take very long, is it?
I'll talk quickly.
Okay.
Okay, so moving from D Lake to Nell Scott, this is the design for the parking lot at 35th Street at Highway 101, and it's moving along just fine. We understood that there was some agency concern about the existing off-site motel sign that's located on the project site. You can see that in the photo there. So the staff met with the owners of the Sandcastle Motel and the Overlook Motel to show them the new design for a general wayfinding sign, which is shown here. And you can see that the design of the monument sign reflects elements of the Pearl Neighborhood signs, and also of the Nell Scott spire and the low beach wall at 35th Street, so it ties in nicely. And we just wanted to let you know, report back to you, that both motels were supportive of this new wayfinding sign, and so that's what we'll be proceeding with.
Cool.
Question, if I can? You phrased it different in, tonight, than reading in the memo. And so one of my questions, I, and I, looking for a quote, but in your cover memo on this, it talked about the Overlake, Overlook giving permission to their sign. And I wanted to make sure that, this is urban renewal's sign, correct?
This is their sign on our property.
Ah, okay.
And it was on, you know, we had purchased the property with the sign existing, which is their sign. They were listing-
This would be our sign, but the one that they're allowing to be removed.
So they could have the sign, but, so I just want to make sure that we're really talking about what the agency is looking at, and as nice as it is, and I don't mean to imply that I don't want to hear from the businesses, but the fact is, you know, we could ask them to remove their sign and move ahead.
Certainly.
Oh, okay. I was just wanting to make sure that where their agency is in. And I like the genericness of this, of lodging and beach, and it's at 35th, so it might bleed off some of the traffic going to the beach before they get to the light, correct, at 32nd? And doesn't look like there's a lot of maintenance for changing hotel, hotel names and that kind of stuff. Was there any, or has there been any discussion of trying to help clean up clutter on the Nell Scott Business Strip? I like this, but originally, I was envisioning how to avoid all the signage in the business district, because before, we'd kept getting noise about needing A-frames and, you know, everything else, and I had envisioned if we had this sign placement area, you know, one more place where we could remind customers, potential customers, what's in the district. But this seems to be exclusive to beach and lodging. Was there any thought of, or does it, adding more, or adding, or was this the full intent, all the wages to do the beach and-
Originally, we had thought that it might say lodging, restrooms, parking, beach access, that kind of thing. But then it started getting kind of high, and then we realized that if we say beach, the beach, there's, it's sort of assumed that there's a place to park when you get there, and the parking isn't what you would call a parking lot. So we didn't want to necessarily make a big deal about, hey, you've got parking down here, when there's only three parking spaces in it. And then the restroom, the same way. We just felt like, we could, those are some of the things that we could eliminate.
Yeah.
So, and we didn't really think about the strip. I mean, it's so visible. The one thing that we have done recently is, you know, we changed our sign grant, our facade grant program to include signage, so that if everybody in the strip wanted to go to similar blade signs that, you know, would kind of hang, instead of being, trying to pull people off the highway, but be more pedestrian oriented, that we have a program that would, that would-
Facilitate that?
Facilitate that.
That's a good idea, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Thanks, Gary.
I know we're out of time, but I would just like to include, when this was brought up to us, we were excited, and not just because we have a motel, but there are a lot of people that rent VRDs down in that specific area, and so lodging is a term that can direct people to that also. And along with the motel, the overlook, and there's another motel to the north of us, which is a little bit out of the district, but within eyesight of it. So I think that's a good sign.
Anyone else? Okay.
Very attractive.
Next is public hearings. We have none, resolutions we have none. Do we have any comments from agency members? No comments from agency members? We're adjourned.